I want to call the April 16, 2020, meeting of the Farragut Municipal Planning Commission to Order. This is their first Farragut Planning Commission meeting online, so it's a historic night, I suppose. In accordance with the Governor's Executive Order Number 16, live access to this meeting is available on Charter Channel 193 and the TDS Channel 3, and can be viewed later on the Farragut YouTube channel. Due to the meeting being conducted online, we have a different procedure to follow in the sequence of the meeting. Mark, will you go over that for us, please?
Yeah, basically, and this is just for the voting items that we have on the agenda, and really, the voting items that would have an applicant, for the most part. The Chairman Rita will review the Agenda Item caption, just as always in typical meetings. The staff will provide our report for the item and any staff recommendations, just like usual. And then, the Chairman will ask each Commissioner individually by name if they have any questions for the staff, and if so, the staff can try to respond to those. And then, a little bit different for the Planning Commission, but consistent with the Board and the Roberts Rules procedures. The Chairman Rita, she'll ask for a motion and a second on the item prior to any additional discussion. And then, the motion, whoever makes the motion needs to announce their name, that they're making the motion, and the second. Anytime you speak tonight, if you could just announce your name first, and then, when you're finished speaking, mute yourself, so that we don't hear any background noise. And after that, Rita will ask the, or the Chairman will ask the applicant, if there's an applicant present, if they have anything to provide in regards to their item, once they introduce themselves. And if they have any response to any questions that may have been raised by either the staff or the Planning Commissioners. We did not receive any citizen comments on any of the Agenda Items or for the Citizen Form, so Items Number 6 and 7 in the sequence that I'd sent out earlier today would not really apply tonight. So then, after the applicants had a chance to answer any questions, then the Chairman would ask if there was any amendments to the motion that is on the floor. And then, you basically go through the same process there, introduce your name and what you're proposing to change, and so forth, and that had to be seconded as well. And then, the Chairman will ask the staff to record a roll call vote on each item, and then, I would, I'll go through and ask each Commissioner what their vote is on the item, yes or no, based on the motion. And then, I'll record the results and report the results on that particular item. So, that's how it'll work.
Mark, sorry to interrupt. Our Commissioner Kyle has raised her hand.
Okay.
No, I didn't raise my hand. If I did, it was inadvertently, sorry.
Okay, no worries.
Okay, that's all I have on that.
In that case, we'll move along and start the Agenda. First, we need a form call. Mark?
Okay, this, again, I'm just gonna see who's here for the meeting. Commissioner Myers, just answer yes if you're here. Commissioner Myers?
He was here a minute ago.
Commissioner Myers is here. Sorry, it took me a second to get the unmute going.
Okay, Commissioner Dick? Commissioner Dick?
Who's talking to Betty?
Okay, I'm gonna go on to the next one. Commissioner Russ?
Present.
Okay, Commissioner Kyle?
Present.
Commissioner Green?
Present.
Vice Chairman St. Clair? Vice Chairman St. Clair?
I don't even see his microphone.
I saw he was here earlier.
Yes, here.
He was here, yeah.
Mark, give me a moment, I'm gonna unmute our call-in callers, just in case that's one of, he's one of them and can't unmute his phone, or is having trouble doing that for a moment.
Okay. I know he's here. Okay, I know he's here. Vice Mayor Povlin?
Vice Mayor Povlin's here.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I hear you. Mayor Williams?
Here.
Student Representative Melanie?
Here.
Okay. And then, I'd like to record for the record the staff members that are present, obviously, myself, Mark Shipley. Is David Smoke present?
I am here, Mark.
Okay, and we know Trevor Hobbs is present. Are there any other town staff members present? Okay. Any press, Farragut Press representatives present?
Present.
This is Michelle Hollandhead, I'm here.
Okay. Any shopper representative present?
Yes, Mark, it's Margie from the shopper, thank you.
Okay, any other media members present? Okay, that's it, we'll go on to the next item, then.
Then, item number one, approval of the Agenda. Staff recommends approval of the Agenda is submitted. Do I have a motion?
Vice Mayor Povlin moves to approve.
Mayor Williams will second.
All those, so Mark, do a roll call, please?
Yeah, I had to write it down, real quick. Commissioner Myers?
Hi.
Commissioner Dick? I'm not sure if we're on the call. Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Kyle?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Vice Chairman St. Clair?
Aye.
Chairman Holliday?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Povlin?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
And Melanie, is she on for those? I guess, I don't know if you'd have to vote on it or not, since you're just, yeah, I won't ask for that, then. That's good. So, the motion passes unanimously.
In that case, we'll move on to item number two, approval of the minutes for the March 19, 2020 meeting.
Vice Mayor Povlin moved to approve.
Mayor Williams, second.
Mark, roll call, please.
Hi, this is Trevor Hobbs. Hi, this is Trevor Hobbs, for Mrs. Dick. Is Betty, is Betty there?
Commissioner Myers?
Abstain.
Okay, I apologize.
Aye.
Commissioner Kyle?
Abstain because of absence.
Aye.
Vice Chairman St. Clair?
Aye.
Chairman Holliday?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Povlin?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
And I know that Betty was not at the meeting, from memory, last time, so the motion passes six to three, with the three abstaining, because they were absent from the meeting.
Then, we'll move on to item number three, discussion in public hearing on an upgrade to the KUB guest lines on Admiral Road, Dundee Road, Dusen Road, Orin Road, Watlake Road, and Turkey Creek Cove, KUB applicant.
This is Brett Elmore, KUB.
Okay, let me just go over the project briefly.
Sorry.
And you can jump in there in a minute, if you have any, any questions for it. Basically, this project is mostly in the Stonecrest subdivision. There's a small section that connects over to the Cove at Turkey Creek from Orin Road, but basically, they're condemning roughly 900 linear feet of steel gas main on Newport Road, and replacing it with about 425 linear feet of new plastic gas main, and then installing about 2,200 linear feet of new plastic gas main on a number of streets in the Stonecrest subdivision, Dundee, Duzane, Admiral Road, Wardley Road, Orin Road, and as I mentioned earlier, the Cove at Turkey Cove Lane, just stubbing into the subdivision. Most of the work that will be performed with directional boring, there shouldn't be much open trench cutting for the project, and all the customers in the affected area would be receiving a notification postcard prior to the work beginning. They're looking to start the work actually really soon, maybe Monday, and end it by the end of June. As far as the staff's comments, and we have sent these to the applicant, it's pretty much the same comments we had when the, when KUB had a similar project in Concord Hills pretty recently. I'm just gonna walk through some of these slides showing the general locations there of the project. There's a little section that's going over to Matthews Cove from Orin. But basically, let me read through those four conditions for the record. Staff recommends approval of this item subject to obtaining a grading and right-of-way permit from the town, and using directional boring to the greatest extent possible. Steel and tree fencing would have to be installed where needed, and then inspected and improved by the town staff. Any affected areas would need to be restored to their pre-construction condition. And please ensure that proper traffic control measures are in place. And finally, an ass belt of the gas line placement and easements would need to be submitted to the town, once the project is complete, for our records.
Do I have a motion?
Are we gonna have any discussion?
Got any questions for Mark, anybody?
Commissioner Russ? I've got a question, I'd like a general question on all these gas line replacements. I mean, I need to ask KUB if they don't have anybody available right now. There's several areas where the metal line says it's being condemned, which is basically saying it's being abandoned in place, the way I read it. And, kind of like, know what they're doing with that line, are they capping it off, or what have you, when they're, what's their general protocol for how they basically abandon the old metal line? So, we could just, that's not having to do with them not approving the motion, but I'd like, since we got a series of these, well, I think we're gonna see more of this, I just kind of like to have a general idea of what they're doing to abandon in place. That being said, I'll make a motion to approve with the staff recommendation. Could I just ask one general question, Commissioner Russ? On the notification postcards, in addition to the scope of work, do they indicate on there what the duration of the project is? Because I can imagine a lot of those residents could be like, alright, how long is this gonna be going on? How long should we expect to see the equipment in our neighborhood?
Yeah, this is Mark, is Mr. Elmore present?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, if you want to speak to that, and announce your, your name and who you're with, and if you want to, can answer those questions, we'd appreciate that.
Probably ought to get a motion first, shouldn't we?
We started out, we started out with a motion, but then we didn't get the second.
I'll second. Vice Mayor Povlin, seconds.
Okay, now we can go with the applicant?
Okay, yeah, to my knowledge, they will put a duration on, on the postcard on the mailer.
Will you please tell us, will you please tell us who you are and your position and with KUB, and the address, please?
Yeah, sorry. Brett Elmore, team lead in gas system planning and design. Our address at the office is 4505 Middlebrook Pike, North Tennessee. And yes, the postcard generally indicates the duration of construction, the mailers.
And do you have any comments you want to make before we ask questions of you?
We will, all of the terms, the comments from the staff seem very feasible, and we will, we can achieve all those conditions.
This is Commissioner Green, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I think I asked this the last time you were doing some work, is will there be any temporary shut-offs of existing lines that the customer will experience? And my second question is, coordinating with the underground communications cable work that's currently ongoing on those very same streets?
The first question, there will only be a few customers, and those will be non-residential, and if they do need to be out for any amount of time or interrupted, it'll be a maximum of four hours, at the very most. And so, the addresses that could potentially be affected are 0843 and 10875 Kingston Pike. And those are both commercial properties.
I presume those are about behind David Abbott Carpet?
I believe so.
They've been informed of that? This is Vice Mayor Povlin, I'm sorry, they've been informed that they might be out of service for a little bit, or that's something you guys will address with them if it happens?
That's something we'll address as it, as it kind of happens. Depending on the constructability and the construction sequencing, you know, we'll be in contact with them.
Roseanne, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Commissioner Kyle, Rose Kyle, these first sentence of the second paragraph in your notes, Mark, I'm a bit puzzled as to how this new installation is gonna ensure that there'll be no interruption in the existing gas services.
Well, that's, that's a question for Mr. Elmore, if he can answer that.
Okay.
So, this work is mainly to get rid of some old steel pipe, like you were talking about before, and it's also to introduce a back feed to the area, to create a more resilient and more reliable gas service to the area. So, we'll, we're not necessarily going and replacing each, you know, line in front of the, in all the, where all the services meet in the road. So, again, this, it's really more to create a more resilient gas system for this area.
Roseanne, they, we had this, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Povlin, this was a, an issue when we were talking about last time with Concord Hills. My understanding was, you would all, you'd get, you'd get the new, new pipe installed, and then, once that's all installed, then you'd make the changeover from, and that's fairly quickly, that happens fairly quickly, is that correct?
That's correct, and that's if, if there's a service to be tied over to the new pipe, that's correct.
Commissioner Green, I asked two questions, I only got the answer to the first one. The second one was, are you coordinating with the underground drilling work that's going on with the communications cable work?
To my knowledge, we are not communicating with them.
They're working in that very same area, so it might be.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Russ? Yeah, I have a question, and it's a general question, it applies to other things that may be buried underground, specifically, I'm referring to sprinkler systems and invisible fencing systems. When you encounter those, is that something that is a question on the, the notification postcard, where the residents can work with KUB to identify where those are? Because if those are disrupted or damaged, there'd be underground boring, you know, that's an expense that that, that person would have to cover with, with their provider for those services for sprinkler and underground fencing?
Sure, yeah, and we damage, this is Brett Elmore, if we damage anything, we will replace it.
Okay, thank you.
It probably, sorry, Vice Mayor Povlin, they're working in the town's right-of-way, if somebody's sprinkler system is in the right-of-way, it's probably, it probably shouldn't be there.
Shouldn't be there, yeah.
That's correct.
And same with the, the under, why, underground dog, what do you call them, fencing, that, the same thing, that although I'm sure that people don't realize where the right-of-way is, I'm sure you probably run into that more often than you, than we think.
Yeah, this is Brett again, that's correct. Typically, we would, in this instance, we would be coming in the right-of-way. If we need to purchase an easement, that would be, we would be talking to those homeowners individually, at which point, we would probably be in their lawn and have more conversations about where their underground utilities were, or fences, or not.
I have one, Vice Mayor Povlin, I have one question, really directed at staff, not really a question, a request. Because we have so much going on with, with the underground cable being put in, and how upset people are about 5G, I was wondering if, particularly because KUB's gonna start working very soon, if we could put this out on our next door post, that this is KUB, because we need to get in front of this, and in front of it quickly, because it could, you know, it could start a firestorm before we can get the real information out there. So, maybe a next door post that says KUB will be working on these streets, and an express, an explanation of what they're gonna be doing, even though I know postcards are going out, we know how those things can go.
Vice Chairman, Vice Chairman St. Clair, I can attest that when they did the work recently in Concord Hills, that they did put that information on, on the next door, and I think, and I think it was the town staff that did that. Yeah, Wendy typically does that. Wendy did, Wendy did that.
Commissioner Russ? Vice Chairman St. Clair, again, I'd like to go back to my question that I asked about, what, what's the general process that y'all use to abandon and place the old steel lines?
Yes, sir, we will cut and cap those in place, and abandon those in place, and they'll be marked abandon on our maps moving forward.
Okay. So, you do put them on the ass belts, and you do cap them off? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Mayor Williams passes on questions.
I have none more. Vice Mayor has no more.
Commissioner Myers passes on questions.
Can we communicate at all with Betty? Commissioner Kyle passes. And we, we have no questions from Betty. In that case, do we have any change to the motion? Mark, do you want to do a roll call?
You're muted.
Okay. Mr. Myers?
Aye.
Mr. Dick? Not sure if she's available or not. Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Mr. Kyle? Commissioner Kyle?
Aye.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Vice Chairman St. Clair?
Aye.
Chairman Holliday?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Povlin?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
One thing, I missed who made the original motion, I apologize, I know Louise made the second.
Vice Chairman St. Clair.
Okay, that's, that's what I had down, but I, I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, discussion in public hearing on a final plat for the Ivy Farms Road and Townhouses, parcel 58, tax map 151, 39 lots, 22.86 acres, Zone NCC, R-1, and FPD Site Incorporated applicant.
This final plat involves plating the right-of-way for the Ivy Farms Road, which has been under construction for the past few months, and it connects Kingston Pike to Union Road. And then, at the same time, they're plating easements throughout the whole property. This was formerly the, what was locally known as the Swan Farm property, just on the north side of Kingston Pike from Way Station Trail. And on the north part of the, the project, they are plating 34 townhome lots as part of this, of this final plat. The staff recommendations were sent out to you all and the applicant, and let me just go through those. The staff does recommend approval of the plat, subject to the following conditions. Please, first condition was, please either complete the, please either complete the walking trail to Kingston Pike, or provide a completion letter of credit to cover the completion of the walking trail within the next year. If they don't have it complete within that timeframe, they would have to ask for an extension of the letter of credit from the Planning Commission. The amount of that letter of credit would be determined by the town engineer, and this letter of credit could also cover the sidewalks that are required internal to the townhome development, and that would connect to the greenway. And so, it could cover those. I don't think the applicant is wanting to put those in now, because they would be disrupted during construction. And the second item was to correct note number 13 on Sheet 1, which is a sheet that's on the screen, to indicate that there are 38 lots, I think it referenced 37. And then, to more clearly, and it may or may not need to be on a plat, but at least in the covenants that will be recorded with the plat, to better explain the relationship between the residential and commercial development as it applies to that particular note. The third item was to please include as a plat note that access for Lot 38 cannot be directly onto Kingston Pike, which of course, it couldn't meet our distance requirement anyway, but that's a standard note. The fourth condition was something that was actually on the preliminary plat for the Ivy Farms Road, there's a small billboard on the southwest corner of the property near Kingston Pike, and that does have to be removed. It was shown to be demolished as part of the preliminary plat for the Ivy Farms Road, that's condition four. Five is, please consider showing the internal drainage lines that are in the townhome development, there's some small, basically roof drain. There's some small, basically roof drain, storm sewer lines that don't really require an easement. And they don't really have to be shown. We just mentioned that as a note. They may want to show it just for future reference, to know that that, that facility is in that location and it doesn't get potentially damaged during construction. And six, the greenway easement, actually, as we require of all of our greenway easements, the easement itself needs to be centered. I mean, the walking trail needs to be centered within the easement. Because when we go out and we ultimately take over the walking trail for maintenance, we measure essentially 10 feet from the center of the constructed trail on each side, and that's the space that we have the easement for and maintain. So it keeps it clear as to what, where the area of responsibility is for the town versus the, the homeowners association or property owners association. And the seventh condition was something from the stormwater coordinator. The town does not currently have an approved stormwater control maintenance agreement form. If the development team has an agreement that they intend to use, to please provide that to the town staff. Number eight, reference to gravel trail should be changed to paved trail where that trail has actually already been paved. I think there's some old language on the trail. It's actually been paved from Union Road through the townhome development. And then, nine is a standard comment on these kind of plats, and that is completion of any remaining field items on the engineering punch list. So if anyone has any questions on that, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Vice Mayor Povlin, I'm sorry, Rita, can I make a suggestion just to make this easier because start asking questions and they could be of Mark and they could be of the applicant? Why don't we, once he's done his explanation, make the motion? And then we can start asking questions and it's either Mark or it's the applicant and then we don't have to, everyone can introduce themselves as they come in, but that's kind of what we do at the board level. That way we're not confusing. So I'm going to make a motion, move to approve with staffs, subject twos, one through nine.
Mayor Williams will second.
Mark? Anybody have questions for Mark at this point?
I do.
I do as well.
Mayor Williams does have questions. If I'm looking at your picture, Mark, of the, that's on the screen, I show 42 units.
There should be 34 how, townhome units. You know, there's other lots that are being platted as part of this, but there, there's only 34 actual townhome units. The other ones are open space or land that will be developed commercially in the future.
Well, if counting, if you look on the road that comes off of the of the side to that particular development, I count, I count 42 of those. Now, are those, are those empty or not being developed or what are we doing there?
Well, I think that's a question for the applicant, but I mean, they.
And we'll, we'll get to him in just a minute then.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Green has a question. Now that we're, now that we're counting, I'm looking at the agenda and the discussion item four says 39 lots. So now we have another number.
Yeah, that, that was the error in the original submittal, but no, the agenda had already been advertised with the error in the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Meyer, do you have a question?
Commissioner Myers passes.
Commissioner Russ?
Commissioner Russ passes.
Commissioner Kyle?
Pass, Kyle.
Commissioner St. Clair?
Just a question about the walking trail that's not shown as gravel. Is it, is it really in just past the, the lot line? Between 36, I think that is 36 and 39?
Yes. It, it goes through the townhome portion and slightly past that.
The intention is it stops there?
No, I mean, ultimately, it will go all the way to Kingston Pike, and that's what the letter of credit under, under the subject two for number one, the first subject two is related to that, that they either need to go ahead and finish the walking trail to Kingston Pike or post a completion letter of credit to ensure that that will be completed. You know, within a year unless they receive an extension from the planning commission.
Okay. No further questions?
Mayor, do you have any questions? And again, no question.
No, it's, I'm good. That's, I counted them there. I guess we're 34 instead of 39 then, correct?
No, the total lots include the common area lots as well.
Yeah, that's right.
No, I meant as far as what I see in buildings.
34. There should be 34 townhome lots.
Okay.
Yeah.
Building in.
What happened, the reason there's an extra lot and, and the original legal notice was different was we, we had a question on the original submittal about the land that was west of the Ivy Farms right of way because it was an extra wide space and we either asked them to make it clear as to how that space is going to be maintained past the normal right of way area or make it an open space lot, and they made it an open space lot. So that's where the extra lot came from.
Okay, that, that's what I'm seeing then. I'm trying to count the number of total lots.
Yeah, there would be 40 total, I believe.
Okay.
Chairman Holliday, I have a question. Go ahead. Vice Mayor Povlin, how, where does the greenway connect into Kingston Pike, Mark? Is there a way for you to kind of describe that to me? Because I don't see how it's supposed to connect. Is there going to be a bridge? Is it going to have to cross over the stream? I don't understand where it goes.
Well, they do show easement throughout, all the way to Kingston Pike. And it kind of, it wraps. Let me see if I can use this thing. Might mess up here. I'll try to.
Color it in.
I see where it is. Okay, I see the easement now.
So it kind of wraps around and it avoids the aquatic buffer, curves up the aquatic buffer and comes around?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, it basically goes around the detention basin. And then it kind of comes back down.
Yep. I see. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, again, Mark.
Yeah, right here is, is where it comes back in. It's, it's kind of on the very left hand side of the, it's kind of curving around and it curves back into Kingston Pike.
And do we have Commissioner Dick on the line to ask a question?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, we'll move on now to the applicant. Is the applicant with us?
Yes, John Anderson with Site Incorporated, 10215 Technology Drive, Suite 16, Suite 304, Knoxville, 37932.
Thank you. Do you have any comments you want to make before we get started with asking you questions? Comments or questions that you might have?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we'll go down the line. I'll start with Commissioner Meyer. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, ma'am. No questions from Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Russ, any questions?
I do not have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Green?
I do not have any questions.
Commissioner Kyle?
Yes, I have one. I still am a bit bumfuzzled about how many lots. I see the numbers on this plat that we have here going up to 39. And the 39th one is 15.81 acres. That's nearest Kingston Pike. Is that considered one whole lot that commercial area? Did I make myself clear?
Yeah, that's one of the commercial lots in the future, I believe. Lot 40 is the one we looked at earlier, which is that west side of the right of way on Ivy Farms Road where the right of way would otherwise be very wide.
I'm showing lot 40 is the one that's right across the street from the Fox Run entrance.
That's what it looks like to me. 2.87 acre.
See, oh, I'm sorry, that was 37. Yeah, you're right. Yep.
Well, am I correct in lot 39 is designated 15.81 acres and it's the one closest to Kingston Pike?
Yes, it's lot 39, yep.
And isn't that, that presumably is planned to be commercial, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Now, these others, the 38 and 35, 36, those are just common areas in the town home area development?
38 would be a, 38 would be a buildable lot down at Kingston Pike. 39 is another buildable lot. 40 is actually zoned R1. That's a lot that the original developer had plans of building a house there, but I don't know if he's going to follow through with that or not. But all the lots basically south of the townhome portion of this would be part of the commercial development. They would be tied in with, with all, the whole property would be tied together, but that will be where the commercial or office or mixture thereof would occur.
Be honest with you, I haven't even found 40 yet.
It's on sheet three. It's on sheet three.
It's right there. It's on the screen, Roseanne. Roseanne, it's right across from Burchart Boulevard. It's separated from the rest of the, rest of this property by this, the stream, the creek. It's 2.97 acres.
I, I found it. Thank you.
And Mayor Williams, where is the house? The house? What lot number?
Yeah, it was planned on lot 40.
Wash.
Well, I don't know if you're going to follow through with it or not. I haven't seen any, he hasn't submitted a house plan yet for, that was an earlier intention.
Commissioners, Claire, do you have any questions? Commissioners, St. Clair, do you have questions?
Oh, I didn't hear my name. No, I had no further questions.
Mayor, any further questions?
I'm still concerned about lot 40. We've got Mr. Anderson, applicant there. He, can he tell us what the plan is on that piece, piece of property?
Yes, sir. There's no plan for it at this time. It's just a remnant because it's on the other side of the creek. Has frontage on Union Road, so just separating it out as a remnant piece of property.
Okay, thank you. No more.
Vice Mayor Problem? I just, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is do we have clarity on what we're actually plating? Are we plating lot 40 even though they don't have plans for it? And are we plating the commercial lot even though there's no plans for it right now? Are we just doing the residential areas?
No, we're plating the whole property as it should. They may further subdivide it in the future depending on how they end up developing the larger tracts, but for now they're plating the whole property into the lots, showing a total of 40 lots, 34 of which would be townhome lots.
Okay, so this, this residential lot that's 2.97 acres is, is included in part of this?
Yes.
Could it potentially be sold off and I don't even know how you handle that. If that's, is it replatted differently if they sell it to somebody else and somebody else develops it? How does that?
The thing with that property is it's got a lot of physical limitations, a lot of floodplain, probably some jurisdictional wetlands potentially, just from the looks of it and leased. And it is not part of the NCC zoning. It's actually zoned R1, so it's not really.
There's a potential that there could be possibly a home if you can figure out where you can build it on.
Yeah, yes.
All right. But for now, it's part of all of this.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I've got.
As an applicant, all right, have you got any questions or comments about the, any of the subject twos? And are you in agreement with staff on this?
Yes, we're, we're in agreement and work with staff to resolve them.
Is there any change in the motion?
None.
In that case, roll call, Mark.
Okay, Commissioner Myers?
Commissioner Myers, aye.
Mr. Russ?
Aye.
Mr. Kyle?
Aye.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Vice Chairman St. Clair?
Aye.
Chairman Holliday?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Povlin?
Sorry, Vice Mayor Povlin, aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to item number five, discussion in public hearing on a site plan amendment related to the proposed retaining wall for phase two of the PCD District, 115 South Watt Road, 18.65 acres, PCD Watt Road Investments LLC applicant.
Yeah, this item was discussed at last month's planning commission meeting. There was actually a couple of site-related items, which we did resolve, one of them. But one of the items that was unresolved and we postponed taking action on it last month was the what's called the soil nail wall that is proposed around a portion of the periphery of this multifamily development at South Watt Road. And basically the soil nail walls we talked about last month is being used in order to minimize disturbance so that they don't have to encroach into wooded portions of the required transition area between this development and residential property that surrounds that portion of the project. The, the challenge was with these kind of walls, they can be very industrial looking unless they have a, a good treatment over the surface of them. Originally, the applicant had proposed a smooth face concrete and to have some vines that would drape over it and basically make a green wall over time. And the staff was not able to support that approach. Then the staff indicated at the meeting that in this planned commercial development zoning district is, is one that the applicant has an opportunity to do things that you can't do in a regular general commercial or regional commercial zone. For example, residential in this zone would not be permitted in regular C1. And then they have a pretty high residential density. It's actually in excess of the R6. So in exchange for that, you know, component, the, these type developments are expected to have a, you know, to give back to the community, something that is in excess of what would otherwise be provided in a regular commercial development. So that all meant that this retaining wall really needs to look very good. So that all meant that this retaining wall really needs to look very good. And so there was an alternate wall that was proposed. It was actually given, a drawing of it was given out at the meeting. That also did not seem to meet the standards that we are expecting for this. This is a very tall wall. In places, it'll be almost 35 feet tall. So it's, you know, it can have a big visual impact. And what the commissioners had provided the applicant with was, you know, example of what we're looking for might be something like what the town has finished up over on North Campbell Station Road near the high school entrance, where you've got a combination of brick and stone on that wall. And so the applicant has proposed at this time, a, the wall that's there on the screen, and that's the light-colored area is, is brick. And then the, the linear sections, the vertical sections would be stone, not cultured stone, but actual stone. And then they're proposing a four-foot black vinyl chain link fence across the top of the wall just because of, you know, liability issues since it's so high. The staff's recommendation on this item, this is the only drawing that we've received so far, so obviously I think we need a lot more detail about the specifics of, of the veneer that's being proposed. Normally, if this was in a actual live meeting, face-to-face meeting, we would require material board for this. So I think that still needs to be presented to the staff, but we also need a cross-section, a detail of the wall and showing the, the materials, the exact materials, their rough dimensions, how they're going to be affixed to the wall. And then we would suggest using some other type of fence besides a plastic chain link, a vinyl chain link, something that would, you know, look more visually appealing, perhaps a, you know, a shadow box type fence that would be made out of materials that would, would not need any long-term maintenance and, you know, look good for a long period of time. So that was the two observations from the staff on this item, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Need a motion first?
Mayor Williams makes motion.
Commissioner Kyle, seconds.
Okay, I'm going to go down the road to call on you to ask questions or comments. The commissioners of Mark at this point, Commissioner Meyer?
No questions.
Commissioner Russ?
Yeah, I just have a comment too, and it kind of ties into, I think, what, what you had said, Mark, in, in your comments about using a different type of fence than a chain link fence, and you suggest maybe a shadow box style of fence, but I personally would be hard-pressed to approve any type of chain link fence for this project, or for that matter, any other town residential or commercial properties. They just, they look, they look bad. This type of construction design doesn't really meet the higher visual expectations of the PCD zoning district. And in order to meet the town's PCD zoning district visual expectations, I, I would suggest something like a picket-style galvanized metal powder-coated fence or even, even aluminum picket-style powder-coated fence. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green.
I have a couple of questions. On the drawing, it shows brick veneer and stone veneer. Are we talking veneer in like a thin layer or are we talking an actual brick and an actual stone, you know, dimension?
Well, that would go back to their, to the staff's comment on, one, we need more detail about the dimension of the materials they're proposing as the veneer over the wall. I mean, we don't know the, the width and depth of the block, how it's going to be affixed to the wall. I mean, it's just kind of a pretty picture at this point. There's no real specifics or no details so far with, with what they've submitted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kyle?
No questions at this time.
Vice Mayor Poblen?
Mark, I'm going to suggest that if that's indeed what we need is a cross-section detail, the brick, the stone, that we make sure that we've beefed up that, that statement, staff statement number one, that a cross-section detail of the wall would be included in the final site plan review set. That doesn't necessarily say that if it's not acceptable, then we won't accept it. I, I just want that language to be very clear that we are looking for something very specific. So I don't know how we, we make sure that language is very clear with, with regard to that. That's my concern. And, and I agree, the fence, certainly safety needs to be the first concern because that, 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 that wall is so high in certain areas, but it also needs to be attractive. So, on how you do that?
Yeah, we could, we could add something to the, to the first comment there, just that the, that the final site plan review set has to be acceptable to the town staff, or if the staff is uncertain as to, you know, if we, we need further guidance, then we'll bring it back to the planning commission.
Okay, can we amend, do, can I, can I make a motion to amend the subject twos to include those statements, please?
Yes.
Can we, can we get through all of the questions from everybody and then go back?
Okay, that's fine. I'll hold, withhold my motion for a minute.
Commissioner Sinclair?
I just want to add an emphasis on the comment about the drawing and cross-sections. This high wall is going to have a lot of load, so therefore, there needs to be a lot of emphasis on that being an engineered structure that shows exactly how, not just the materials and dimensions, but, you know, some idea, the integrity of that is going to withstand the, the weights and the, and the, and the stresses. So it needs to be an engineered wall, not just architectural cross-sections.
Can you include, we can include that in the motion?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Move on then to the mayor, do you have any questions or comments more?
Well, originally, I spoke up and said, real brick, real rock. The, as far as an engineered wall, I agree with Commissioner Sinclair on that. I'd like to see what kind of drainage we have for this wall. The hydraulic pressure behind it be pretty immense. I'd like to see some sort of a, something that shows what type of drainage we have behind this wall. You know, I built a wall at my place and it, it was only 13-foot high, but I put quite a bit of drainage behind it where the water would not put the pressure on the wall and keep it in. So I, I would really like to see what kind of drainage that we have there. I agree with, also with, Russ, as far as the safety aspect and the visual aspect of the, of the fence, I don't think, I assume that Mark had here a vinyl coated steel chain link, but, and that would probably be fine out on a farm, but again, this is PCD district and we do expect it to be a higher quality. I don't, I look at the handrail and I'm not sure exactly about that handrail. I guess I would need to see something a little bit more about that handrail as well, as far as how sturdy it is. That's my concerns.
And Chairman Rita Holliday has no questions at this time. So move on to the applicant. Are they with us, Mark?
Chairman, Chairman Rita?
Yes.
I, I have one comment before we move on. I'm not sure that we're ready to approve this. There is a motion on the table, and hence it can be voted yea or nay, but I just think there's sufficient questions here concerning the integrity, the materials, and the top of it, that it's just too much to put on the staff to have them approve this without us seeing this again.
Thank you, Commissioner Kyle. Is the applicant with us, Mark?
I believe so. Mark, you're here.
Yeah, I'm here. This is Mark Bylik, 1313 Callumia Road. And we understand the staff and you all's concern of the materials for the, what would be a veneer. It is a true full-size bricks and full-size stone. The reason we haven't done the design on it yet is because there's a huge expense in doing so. You wouldn't have to do it twice or three times. We understand that the need for that is necessary and would be incorporated as part of the retaining wall design plans with the final review set. And once, if you all would approve the concept of it, then we would start the true design to address all your concerns.
I'm going down commissioners and see if you have a question for Mr. Bylik, if that's all he has for now. Commissioner Myers?
I think the applicant's proposal makes sense, that we can approve this in concept, and as long as they're meeting the masonry that we would like to see and maybe some changes in their handrails, I think it's, it's completely appropriate.
Commissioner Russ?
I concur with Mark and Noah. I don't have any further comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Green? Commissioner Green, are you there? We'll get back with him then.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Commissioner Green, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Myers. I think as long as we have the concept understood to let the developer go ahead and go into the engineering and that we trust Mark and his staff to use their judgment and to bring, if they have further complications, to bring that back to us. But I'm okay with that, so that the progress can continue. Thank you.
Commissioner Kyle?
I will agree if the subject twos are firm enough and clear enough as Vice Mayor and has suggested, so that it's clear what we expect.
Commissioner Sinclair?
I'm, I'm comfortable with proceeding based on the stipulations as, as discussed.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Poblen?
Yes, is this a good time to make an amended motion?
Let's, let's give one chance to the mayor here and then we'll get to that. Mayor, any more questions or comments?
Comments, back to the same thing. The, as far as the, from what we've discussed and what, you know, as far, what all the, or the, excuse me, the commissioners put out there, I mean, if Mark's got a list, I think Commissioner Sinclair had it, had one, I had a couple, Commissioner Russ had, had a couple. I think if all those are addressed during design, if staff is comfortable with it, then I will just go ahead and, Vice Mayor Poblen.
I think, I think one thing the staff would need some clarity on is the fence and what in concept you all would want to see there, because I don't know that we've gotten any, I mean, Commissioner Russ made a suggestion, but that might be something that we'd have to bring back to the planning commission.
Given the complexity of the retaining wall, it sounds to me that that might be somewhat not as major a decision that we have to make tonight. Is that correct?
I would think so, yeah. I would think that would be much simpler to deal with than the engineering and the drainage of the wall itself, yeah.
Mark Bylik, is that true, changing the fence won't be as complicated an issue as the rest of it?
Yes, we're familiar, Pat and I are both familiar with multiple different types of aluminum powder-coated fencing systems that we could probably incorporate. We can incorporate in lieu of a chain link fence and along with the guardrails. We have to meet the building code requirements for safety, so chain link is, I agree, is not, may not be the most beautiful fence in the world, but it does meet the codes. But we will look at other options and run them by staff and the developer and make sure that everybody's happy prior to submitting our design plans.
This is Commissioner Myers. I, I also wanted to echo, I think it was John that said that the shadow box would not be his preference. If you look at the fencing behind JCPenney, that wood fencing, it really hasn't weathered well. So I think if they could do some sort of either powder-coated iron or aluminum or something else that both incorporates their handrail and their safety rails, I think that, that's going to be a better, longer-term, lower maintenance than any kind of a wood and sure look a lot better than chain link.
This is Vice Chairman Sinclair, I couldn't agree more.
And I have questions at this time. Do we have a change in the motion?
Yes, I'm going to move to approve with the amended number, the first subject to, to clarify, have clarifying language indicating that the material selection needs to meet staff's, be acceptable by staff's. You know what I want to say, Mark? That's, does that, that's the gist of what I'm trying to get, is that you're, you're making clarification that it needs to meet your approval?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, if it, if we're not sure about it, we're uncertain, we'll bring it back to you because we want to make sure that it, you know, we're, we're not Daryl nor myself for retaining wall experts. So, you know, it's obviously going to have to be engineered by people that are.
Yeah.
So, you know, but if we're, if we're unclear about the appearance of it, namely, then we will have to bring it back to the planning commission and let you all look at it.
That's, that's kind of what I'm looking for, is to make sure that there's clarity in that statement, so.
Got what you need, Mark?
Yeah, think so.
Okay, the motion have a second?
And Sinclair, a second.
Mark, will you do a roll call, please?
I have one more item. We need to make sure that, that Mark Bylik understands what we're asking for.
I was going to say, once we go to design, we know that the materials have to be full-size materials.
Okay, that's one.
And then that the design has to be done by someone who's an expert in it, and that would be who we're, who designed the wall begin with, which is Geo Services. And before we sent this to them, I wanted to make sure that the concept of it was approved by y'all. I don't see that that being a big problem. They are experts at designing retaining walls and, and the appropriate structural integrity of the retaining walls and the veneer face accordingly, and also taking into consideration hydrostatic pressures and stuff. That is part of the hydro, the design of the sole nail wall calculations. They do take that into consideration in the factors of safeties and everything like along that line. So we understand what you want. We will, once, if you'll approve the concept, then we'll start immediately having that design done.
Okay, that's number three. Number four, is the, is the fence on top?
We are, we will change it from something other than a chain link fence to a power to a powder-coated aluminum or similar type fence that has rails and pickets and stuff like that.
Okay, and you're, you're clear that we want to see something with a drainage as far as the hydrostatic on this, on this wall, right? I know you said it, Geo Services.
Right, requirement of the design.
Okay.
That will be in the design calculations associated with the retaining wall itself.
Well, all we seen was a slab, okay? Just a big blob, so I mean.
Which you're saying.
Okay, you got it?
Yep.
Anything else that you need to know from us?
Just, if you approve the concept, we can start moving forward fast and furious. Clock is ticking on us right now.
That's all questions I have.
Okay, Mark?
Okay, Commissioner Myers?
Commissioner Myers, aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Kyle?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Poblen, or Vice Chairman Sinclair, sorry.
Aye.
Chairman Holliday?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Poblen?
Vice Mayor Poblen, aye.
Mayor Williams?
Mayor Williams, aye.
Just to go back, is Commissioner Dick around or can you hear me? Or is she, I'm just not asking her name because I'm not hearing anything. I don't know if anyone else is. Okay. All right, so the motion passes unanimously. The amended motion passes unanimously.
So we're going to move on to item number six, which is for discussion purposes only. Is that right, Mark?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion on conceptual review of the exterior building elevation, a typical street profile for the redevelopment of the old Kroger property, 11238 Kingston Pike Site Incorporated, applicant. And again, it's for discussion purposes only. And Mark, when you go?
Okay, let me just give you a brief overview. No, this was talked about at the staff developer meeting on March 31st a little bit. And it's kind of been in the works for a while. But really, at this, at this stage, the developer is in, obviously, the very early stages of the project. And they're submitting to the staff and the town information as they get to the point where they feel comfortable submitting different elements of their plan. And they're trying to get some feedback as early and frequent as possible, so there's no surprises later on in the project. Obviously, this is a very big project, a very important project for all of us. And we just want to try to, to make sure that everybody, you know, can sound in and provide the applicant with as much feedback as we can. This involves a redevelopment of the old Kroger property and some of the surrounding property. The developers in the process of, I believe, finalizing a flood study to try to better assess what the development potential of the entire property would be. And so in the meantime, they've kind of sent over some preliminary renderings and things. The rendering that's on the screen is a street profile. And basically, the way the project is envisioned at this point, they would be, we don't really have a concept yet because, again, they're working on the flood study and trying to see how all that's going to fit in. But the vision is to extend a new main street into the property that basically would be on the south side of Kingston Pike, directly across from Linden Welch Way, the private road that goes up to the Ferrigot High School. And that would become the primary street for this multiple-use or horizontal mixed-use project. And basically, the buildings that we're going to show you here. Now, let me, let me just mention this. The first, there's four different images of the, I guess we'd call it the north part of this project closer to Kingston Pike. This is where the smaller commercial buildings will be. The first image that's on the screen was actually an initial version of the plan that was reviewed at the staff developer meeting. And let me just talk a little bit about that and what was discussed at that meeting. Some of the things that we looked at from the first rendering, we talked about the height of these non-residential buildings. There is the requirement in the mixed-use town center for having at least the appearance of a two-story building. And so, you know, part of that discussion was whether there might be an opportunity to have a functional second floor. That was talked about. There, there's a building, a larger commercial building as you go south into the property away from Kingston Pike that had kind of a modern look to it. And we'll look at that here in a minute. There was some discussion about that. And one of the walls, one of the elevations that was windowless, and that needed to be addressed. Just a reminder of the 75% face brick requirement in the mixed-use town center. So they're very much aware of that. We looked at the general form of some of the multifamily buildings that would be south into the property, south of these initial commercial buildings as you work your way in from Kingston Pike. And then we had some, some thoughts about, you know, we're going to probably need to look at certain aspects of our comprehensive land use plan, especially as it applies to the mixed-use town center and kind of think about how this type of project will fit in, how the residential component will work. Not just here, but what does that mean for the, the rest of the mixed-use town center land use area? So getting back to these, these images, and let me just go through these. And I'll show you some things that they've amended on these, these smaller buildings. This was, again, the initial building that was submitted. And in the same location, here's the second version that I emailed to you all actually today. So they've added some more vertical to these buildings. They're still only a, a functional, single-floor building, but they're trying to make it, give it that appearance of a two-story building. You can see that the buildings are, this was the previous rendering, another version here. And then that's the revised, same location. Again, showing a little bit more articulation. They're breaking the building up, you know, into a pretty transparent ground floor, which is obviously desirable. You can see that the, the design at this point has angled parking as you work your way in on a one-way direction. There's a 10-foot bioswale landscaped area that separates the, the street. And then they have a 16-foot wide public-private space, a promenade space that you see there where the pedestrians are. This, again, was the first rendering that we looked at at the staff developer. Then here was revisions, the revised concept. Mainly just adding a little more height, a little darker color, maybe potentially a little more traditional-looking brick. And we'll talk a little bit about a comment related to that. I'm just going to go through these real quick and show you some of these images. This is the initial version showing the, if you're looking straight south there, there's a fountain. And then you got the multifamily portion of the project starts where that breezeway area is. Then this is a revised rendering. Now, I mentioned earlier, there was one of the buildings in the original submittal. They're working on revising this. So this is just, I'm just showing you this for information purposes at this point. This was what the staff was talking about. We talked about this at the staff developer meeting with a pretty modern-looking roof form for this. It would be a little bit out of, out of character with, with some of these other buildings they're proposing. And then here's the, again, the multifamily buildings. We're, we're looking at the northernmost portion of the multifamily portion of the project. They're four-story buildings. Pretty traditional-looking. Other renderings of the multifamily portion. This is kind of where you have that transect between commercial and residential right here. So, you know, some of the things that, this is kind of what I would call a horizontal mixed-use development. It's not a vertical mixed-use like you see in a traditional town center in most traditional town centers like downtown Knoxville. You know, where you have a commercial or non-residential on the ground floor and you have something other than that on the other floors typically. So the building itself has a mixture of different types of uses. These are all just basically single-use buildings or spaces that are arranged in a horizontal manner. And that can still be a very inviting and, you know, place-making kind of layout. There's some things that, that the staff pointed out under the recommendation section in the packet that, you know, we need to try to, as we work with the developers throughout this project, to make sure that, that they're providing for that very inviting and transparent street-level floor that really creates a lot of energy there. And then that they're arranging the buildings throughout the development to, to really maximize the, the relationship between the entire people movement system, which is cars, bicyclists, pedestrians, you know, with all the different mixtures of uses that you would have here. And then to try to have a good balance of uses that can complement each other. You know, you want to have a little bit of office, you want to have some commercial, you obviously have some residential. And all those things can kind of work together and complement each other and help develop for a, an energetic and successful type of development. Looking at, trying to have some kind of a larger community space and associated with the project, something that people can identify with as, oh, that's that project that has, you know, the big amphitheater space or, you know, some kind of a linear park feature that can, again, add an element of place-making to the project. And then just to make sure that the project is internally and externally well-connected. It's not kind of an island on its own, that it's connected well within itself and to its surroundings. So those are some things that, as we go through working with the applicant for the next few months, really. They're going to be coming back probably in May to get some more feedback on some additional information that they'll be providing as they, as they work through some things. And so with that, I will try to answer questions. I think we do have some representatives of the applicant here. But that's the renderings that we have so far. And some of the things that the staff has, has already pointed out to the applicant. I would note that, you know, on the revised renderings, as I mentioned earlier, one of the things that, and it's a little bit hard to tell with some of these images, is just the commercial buildings look a little bit darker. The brick and the, the general appearance is a little bit in contrast to the multifamily. And I think, you know, one of the suggestions that we had at the staff level to the applicant was to try to, to, you know, make sure that throughout the development, that there's a symmetry and a, and a cohesiveness between, you know, all the buildings. And they may want to have a little more variety on the larger buildings, which is understandable. But they still need to have a connection to the smaller buildings and a kind of a general consistency throughout the whole project. Another question that we had was at the entrance to the project from Kingston Pike, just trying to make sure that they provide for some kind of iconic element that, you know, gives you that sense of arrival, that sense of distinction that the project, an identity that, that the project could have, you know, with that kind of element. And then the third thing is just to make sure that that, that those private and public spaces along the fronts of the buildings, you know, where you see the pedestrians, where you have the sandwich board signs, the outdoor seating, you know, make sure that we, we carefully think about that and we provide for enough space to have adequate outdoor seating, you know, furnishing areas, street trees like they're showing, and enough of a sidewalk space so that it is, it's a comfortable walking environment. It's not something that creates a lot of, of stress and there's, you know, kind of too, too narrow of a space there for people to be really comfortable with. So those are some of our observations on the revised drawings that were submitted. And again, I would be happy to try to answer any questions. And again, I believe the applicant is also here. Do you all have any?
We'll start out with a motion?
Well, you wouldn't have a motion. We're not.
Just going to, okay, discussion only. So we'll start out with Commissioner Meyer.
I'd like to first start by applauding and thanking the, the applicant and the developer for trying to think outside the box and figure out what's a good redevelopment for that property. It's, it's a challenging piece of property with some older structures on it. And I just, I really appreciate them thinking. I think the, the one-way angled parking is awesome. I've, I've been a big advocate for that for a long time. It works very well in traffic flow. The two-story elements, I think, are critical to our vision of the MUTC overlay. The, and so I encourage them to try to continue to, to incorporate some of those design elements. The, the freestanding building, you know, whether it has a logo on it or not, it's probably an Aldi, which is great. I think Aldi's awesome. But the freestanding building, it, it is not, not only is it in contrast to what the developer's kind of presenting as far as the, their streetscapes, it is in contrast to what, what our vision has been for the MUTC. And so I just encourage them to try to be able to incorporate some more traditional design elements in this, in the freestanding building. And again, thank them for moving forward with a complicated, tough, multifaceted project. And, and we encourage them to, to keep, keep working. And we'll come up with some things that I think are great compromises, both for the community and for the developer. So I guess with that in mind, I'm seeing everything that I like. The freestanding building, obviously, I think they wanted us just to have some, some feedback or they actually wanted some feedback from us on that, on that particular building. And I do have some concerns with, with the, kind of the modern details with that building and some of the panels that are, that are a little more modern, kind of where their signage typically goes. So, but I, I do think it can be done. I've seen it done in other communities. And so keep, keep moving forward and thank you for persevering and, and working with us.
Commissioner Russ?
Yes, again, I, I agree with Commissioner Myers as well. I'm really high on the angle parking. What I, what I've seen so far at the staff developer meeting and what's been presented tonight, I, I think this is a very nice foundational blueprint that meets the intended land use plan elements for the subarea town center. The preliminary concept checks a lot of the boxes that are consistent with the strategy to bring a downtown to Ferrigot. And I think this project will become a great centerpiece and asset for the town of Ferrigot for many years to come. And, you know, thank the developer as well. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
I find the whole appearance very appealing. I think they did a really good job, both in the design and in the rendering of their design. I'm really excited about it. That's all I have.
Commissioner Kyle?
I likewise am excited just about the development and the willingness to undertake this size of a development. I do want to see in the future how it's going to complement the external surroundings, as I think as Mark Chipley alluded to earlier, as well as the pre- as I think as Mark Chipley alluded to earlier, as well as the previous comments about the, uh, the standalone buildings, the residential being more traditional. That's all.
Thank you. Com- Commissioner Sinclair?
I think they've done a very good job, uh, and even improving a great concept from the staff developer to these renderings that we got, uh, as the improvement. I certainly echo their comments about the, uh, the, uh, standalone building and it needs to fit more into the character of this development. Uh, one thing that, uh, I think I mentioned staff developers also, I would bring up again, is that it would be good to have at least, I know it's not a formal site plan, but at least to know exactly how this fits on the property relationship to the surrounding area, Kingston Pike and everything. And you've got the area that leads out to, uh, towards Concord Road.
Yes.
On the, it's through that breezeway, I think that's what you called it, Mark, uh, and, you know, where, how, how is that really going to fit with an overall flow of, of movement? It's just, you know, I know it's not a hard design yet, but, uh, sure would be good to get an idea of spatial relationships on the overall property.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Paulin?
Um, I, I do appreciate the updated, uh, drawings from, um, the last, from staff developer with the, the, certainly, certainly very attractive with the second story. Um, uh, I think we do, like as Mark stated, we need to make sure that we're providing opportunities for outdoor seating for restaurants, um, and outdoor activity, interaction with the pedestrians, um, in the, this, the sidewalk areas. Um, I would add, and I know that this is not, um, the developer's responsibility, but look for, um, opportunities where we may be able to address, um, the entrance into, or help Knox County Farragut High School, address the entrance into Farragut High School since you'll be looking right, coming into the, going into that development's going to look really beautiful, and then looking left and going into the high school. Um, you know, I know that we've been working really hard to kind of update Farragut High School. We just hate when people drive up to Farragut High School and say, "This is Farragut High School." So any opportunity where we can maybe help refresh and, um, bring that connection between what's going on at the high school side with, with this would be, uh, wonderful suggestions and helpful. Um, and I just want to close with, um, I've said this at staff developer and I've said it to anyone who's willing to listen, with this being, um, proposed and the town center concept coming here, we really, really need to look at the entire, all of what, as a community, the entirety of the town center area, um, including the underdeveloped or undeveloped, other undeveloped properties, to make sure that, um, uh, we're, we're getting what we want out of, uh, for our community. I know Ford Property had been the original point of view for maybe having a town center. So how do we, uh, address that? And I know that's separate conversation from this, but it's kind of connected because, um, it's important, this is, to me, getting this area right is critically import, important to longstanding, um, relevance of the town of Farragut as a desirable place to live. And so it's important that we're looking at all of it. So those were, those are my only comments.
And Mark, before we get to the mayor, I have a couple of questions. One about parking for the residential, uh, what, what do they have in mind for parking? We're, we're not talking a great big, huge asphalt parking lot, are we?
Well, I think they're still working on that. Obviously, our, we'll be offering them the suggestions of trying to break the parking lot up into as small a modules as possible, but because of the number of units, there will be a lot of, it'll be a pretty sizable parking area. Uh, we'll just try to encourage them to, to break it up and, and heavily landscape it so that, you know, that's softened up and balances well with the remainder of the project.
And where in relationship with this is the old Kroger building? Do you have any idea yet?
Well, the image on the screen would be north of that, and as you get down toward the larger commercial buildings, that's where the old Kroger generally would be. And then as you transition south of that, there's where the multifamily would start.
And so this street here is the, and the old Kroger building itself are the only commercial aspects of this?
Yeah, this primary street here, um, and then all the way down to where it starts into the multifamily would be the only, at this point, the only envisioned non-residential part.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
Yes, uh, boy, I like how you started that out, Mark, with that, with, uh, saying that being Main Street. I, I really like that. Um, that might be a good name for that particular side of the street, but, uh, down through there, but, uh, I think really, uh, Vice Mayor Paulin touched on something that, uh, we need, we do need to think about. Uh, of course, it, uh, I think the old town center design was, uh, uh, was more vertical, and, uh, I think, uh, that's something that, uh, is, it maybe works in some places, but, uh, I think right here, this, this more horizontal is, uh, uh, fits the, the land itself better. Uh, the, uh, uh, and you've also got to look what can be filled up, uh, you know, with this type of concept. Uh, and you do really need to think about the other Ford Property, the Craig Allen Property, because that's two other large properties that, that will probably be all together at some point in time. I don't know if it'll be in my lifetime, but, uh, um, but it's, and, and for what, uh, Commissioner, um, um, said about the property as far as the parking, I think that's a big enough piece of property that, uh, that you can break it up with islands and with, uh, with landscaping to where it, uh, don't look just like a big sea of, uh, parking, uh, parking lots. If you, uh, if they place those buildings properly, then I think they could have enough room there. Uh, but, uh, and, yeah, uh, Vice Mayor Paulin was right about the entrance, uh, and I think Mark touched on it too, some sort of iconic, uh, entry feature. There's not, nothing there in the middle, uh, that would show anything like that, but, uh, uh, of course, we, what we're seeing there is the pavers, formal pavers and, and ro- not really Kingston Pike, but, uh, so anyway, I think that's about all I had. I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, the rest of what they bring to us as far as the, uh, the apartments and the, uh, uh, the pool area and the, uh, the, uh, whatever area they have as far as another amenity. I mean, I think they were talking about, uh, possible pocket park and, uh, and maybe even a clubhouse. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. That's all.
Is the applicant with us, Mark?
I believe so.
Yes, Mark, it's Bud Cullum, 6312 Kingston Pike, Knoxville, Tennessee. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we hear you then.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Uh, anyway, Mark, I want to thank you, I want to thank the mayor, uh, David Smoke, all of the commissioners. Uh, we have been working on this over a year now, and, uh, the, the staff has been tremendous in helping us. This has been very informative, not only the staff developer meeting a couple of weeks ago, but just hearing your comments tonight. And it probably does seem a little bit out of sequence to be discussing the, the architectural look at this point when we don't have the concise site plan. I apologize for that. Uh, we started getting into some site planning work, and when we realized the extent of some of the, uh, potential for flood problems and some of the situations with, with 2020 ordinances that were overlaid on a property that was developed in the late seventies, uh, it became apparent that we needed to back up and do a full-blown flood study. That study is just being finished literally in the, it's today and tomorrow, uh, which will then allow us to finalize more of our conceptual plan, uh, based on grades and, and, and stormwater management. And, uh, but to, essentially, the goal is, is that we do have a main street coming in. Uh, to answer one question, for all intents and purposes, the entire property that the, what I'll call the existing Kroger or the old Kroger, uh, is on, will be all commercial. I'd like to address that the freestanding building, the larger building that was a, uh, I'm not at liberty to say the name, but most people can guess pretty good. I think one, one commissioner already took a stab at it and was probably fairly spot-on. Uh, that's all I'll say, but the, uh, that building, we have already had discussions with that, uh, tenant, and they have supplied us with an alternate, and that building will not actually be totally freestanding. And we will have some, some renderings, uh, very soon, as, as soon potentially as next week, to submit to staff, showing how that would be tied in, softened up, blended to the look as, uh, a, a whole lot like what you're looking at on the screen right now. And then I would like to address a little bit as to the multifamily. The intent would be for the, for the parking to not only be broken up with a lot of islands and a lot of landscaping, but also to be interior so that as you're traveling, uh, especially if you're traveling down Brook Lawn all the way back to Campbell Station, you would not see a sea of parking. Uh, the idea also is to, depending on what this flood study shows, exactly how we design it, but the intent is to incorporate the existing, uh, greenway and, and try to incorporate a park that would be, not only could be used by our residents and I, and the, the people that come in and, and use our commercial as pedestrians, but it would truly be a public park. Uh, we've, we've taken note of the fact that there really does need to be a distinct, and as I think the term that was used was iconic, uh, when you come into the entrance. I, I echo what the vice mayor says regarding the entrance to the high school. Uh, I, I know that we can't necessarily do that ourselves, but as far as working with you to help incorporate that, and I might add also that I'm a 1982 graduate at Farragut, so it's kind of like I'm coming home. So I have a, I have a little bit of a heartstring desire to make that look better also. So I'm, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions, but otherwise I'm going to shut up.
Um, I, I, this Vice Mayor Paulin, uh, but I appreciate your time and, uh, just for clarity, because I know you guys can't do anything, but there may be an opportunity in the future where we could work with Farragut High School, because I know they're trying to work that, uh, improve their, well, they're always trying to improve the, the look of that. So, um, when you're designing in the front, even if it's plant material or trees or knowing that that baseball field is there, and there's always going to be required some, um, some protection there, um, I would just like for you to keep that in mind in the back of your head, hey, this might work better, these trees might work better here because they'll work better across the street, or something like that. I guess it's just, just being mindful that someday, uh, maybe, uh, we can have a cooperative, um, opportunity with the high school, meaning the town, to do something, so. And I would love for it all to really kind of mesh together, it'd be really nice. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that statement.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Meyer?
First does not have any further questions and thanks the applicant for their time.
Commissioner Russ?
Uh, no further comment, and thank you, Mr. Cullum.
Commissioner Green?
Uh, no further comments, thank you.
Commissioner Kyle?
I'm just tickled to death, and thank you, Mr. Cullum, for being present tonight.
Commissioner Sinclair?
I'd say amen to all that, but, uh, one question, could, do we have kind of a general arrangement drawing on the, showing the arrangement on the property by the next staff developer meeting?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, you, I, and I have a couple of other representatives on, and if I'm getting, if I say something that, that maybe I can't achieve, please jump in, but our, our intent would be to hopefully have something even before then.
That'd be great.
That way the staff can start, yeah.
I'm not thinking of, you know, a site plan, I'm thinking of a concept, you know, general arrangement drawing type.
Right, yeah, at, at least have some, some conceptual of how it lays out when you're from an over, from a plan view.
Correct. Right. Thank you.
Mayor, do you have any more questions or comments?
No, I think Bud covered it pretty good and, and everything else that's been asked, I think covers what we see now. Looking forward to seeing the rest of it at the next staff developer.
Thank you, and I just want to say that, um, people in the town of Farragut are very excited about this. This is something they've been wanting for quite a long time, and they're very excited about the prospects. So thank you. Mark, is that sufficient for helping with some ideas that you need?
Yeah, I, I think so, yeah.
So, we thank you all for coming tonight, and we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Which is also a, um, for discussion purposes only tonight, uh, item number seven is for discussion or request for a text amendment to Appendix A zoning, Chapter Two, definition to provide low-impact retail sales, personal fitness services, and Chapter Three, specific district regulation, Section 12, Office District 01, to add personal services, personal fitness services, low-impact retail sales as permitted uses. Matthew McClanahan, applicant.
Uh, basically, this request is to, um, add some uses to the general Office 01 zoning district. Um, initially, the applicant had, uh, had a couple of, uh, pretty broad, uh, range of uses that they wanted to propose, um, and we, we talked about those at the staff developer meeting. They had some definitions, um, for that, uh, dealing with, uh, personal fitness services and low-impact retail sales. Um, and we felt like that was just getting beyond, um, the purpose and intent of the office zoning district. Uh, so the applicant has narrowed down their request to the five uses that are shown there on the screen. That's the, the latest request. Uh, they also would like to request that, uh, and this was talked about at the staff developer meeting. Apparently mortuary businesses are permitted in the office zoning district. Uh, that's been there for many, many years. Um, uh, I would, the staff would support removing that from the, the office zoning district. Um, not only does it seem to be incompatible with office, but it has a pretty heavy parking space requirement, uh, similar to a restaurant, actually, one per hundred. Uh, so that would, again, seem to be inconsistent with, with office. So really, the first thing that we looked at when the applicant presented this was, you know, what is the general description and intent of the office zoning district? We only have about 10 properties in the town that are zoned office, um, either Office 01 or 013, three-story office or five-story office, 015. Um, and basically, the office district is designed to provide for, obviously, office, but community uses that provide services primarily to the residents of the town. Um, and it's intended to have uses that minimize, uh, disruption of traffic flows, um, and have negative, and, and do not have negative impacts, uh, on adjacent residential uses. So oftentimes, the office zoning district will be a transition, uh, between a commercial and a residential, uh, so it's going to have, you know, a more limited range of uses. Uh, so it's going to have, you know, a more limited range of uses than you would have in commercial, uh, that, you know, offers is kind of a transitional, um, buffer between commercial and residential. Um, so that's the first thing we looked at, um, and also went and looked at the city of Knoxville, what they allow in their general office zoning district, because they just, as everyone knows, they just went through that robust exercise called Recode Knoxville. Uh, so they probably had a lot of input and a lot of research into that. And the staff identified four uses that, uh, we believe would be consistent with the office, and that would be a nutritionist, a personal fitness instructor, a, uh, the barber shop beautician, and then an arts and fitness studio, perhaps limiting that to 1,500 square foot area. Um, the things to consider when we're adding uses to this type of zoning district, uh, are the, does the use create noise? Does it create additional traffic? Does it add more parking requirements? Uh, what are the hours of operation for that particular use? Is it going to be a potential nuisance to either adjacent office uses or residential properties that may surround the, the project? So we felt like those uses, I think, would be, you know, consistent, you know, with the office. Uh, the city of Knoxville actually defines what an art and fitness studio is. They define it as an establishment where an art or activity is taught, studied in or practiced such as dance, martial arts, photography, music, painting, gymnastics, sport lessons, Pilates, or yoga. So, you know, it, we could kind of follow that general language if the commission feels like that is an appropriate addition to, uh, the office district. Uh, because again, it does provide for, um, you know, uses that serve the residents. So it is consistent with the description and intent of office. Uh, the reason for maybe limiting the square footage of that would be so you don't have a, a larger, um, gym facility, you know, that may not be, that may be more fitting in a commercial zoning district. Um, we do not really support adding dry cleaner, laundry mat drop off location, just because it would seem to be an issue with the, the parking arrangement potentially and traffic flow that would be more appropriate for a commercial rather than office. So, um, with that struck from the applicant's request, I think the other four would seem to be reasonable from the staff's perspective. I'll try to answer any questions. I think we do have applicant here.
We'll start out.
I'm for Mark.
Uh, we'll start out first with some questions for Mark from the, um, planning commissioners. Mr., uh, Commissioner Meyer, any questions or comments?
I do not have any questions for Mark. I'm, I'll, whenever we get through it, I'd like to hear what the applicant has to say.
Okay. Same thing, Commissioner Russ?
Pass.
Uh, Commissioner Green?
Pass.
Commissioner Kyle?
Pass.
Commissioner Sinclair?
I, I agree with taking out the dry cleaning and, uh, I think that's more impacted from office than I, and, uh, I think I brought up the mortuary business back at staff developer, so I certainly would like to see that out of it.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Um, I have a few things. First, I agree that if, if we do, um, do the arts and fitness studio, that you would want to limit the square feet because you're gonna, you're gonna have a parking problem. Um, we may want to consider that same, um, I'm not sure if we want to consider the same thing for the barber shop, beautician, hair salon as well. Um, I think the nutritionist could probably be just by going in and redefining, going into our definitions and, and clarifying in professional services, because it seems like more of a almost quasi-medical. Um, so it seems to me would be already be acceptable as in our professional services if we might want to look at that definition again, just for clarity. I started going through the, or our, our language, and one of the things that's in there is cultural activities. I'm not entirely sure, I assume, is there a definition in the, in the list of definitions for cultural activities? Cause that's, I was kind of confused by that. So, I mean, if we're going to get into this where we start amending this, we may as well take a good look at the, what's already permitted in there and make sure that we're, we're square with everything else that's in there already, so.
Yeah, cultural activity is actually defined in chapter two.
Okay.
Of the ordinance.
Okay.
I mean, one thing really, it's kind of a technicality, but we probably ought to, if we want to provide for banks and office, I know we've talked about looking at, you know, where banks go, especially in relation to commercial properties. Right now, the office is financial and real estate offices, whereas if you look in the commercial zoning districts, it's financial and real estate services. So I'm not sure if that's some language we might want, need to clean up. I mean, we, the intent has always been that a bank could go in an office zoning district and it makes sense to me. Uh, it may be the only district where we want a bank, frankly. Um, but that's, you know, that's something that, um, that may need to be, you know, the, the language might need to be parallel, uh, with what the intent is. And that's probably been language, it's been in a zoning ordinance like that probably for many, many years. But I did notice that in, in doing some background research on this, that there's, there's a word difference between the commercial and the office in relation to financial and real estate.
That's all. Those were the only comments I had right now.
Um, and I'll ask a question, then we'll go to the mayor. Um, Mark, is there any conflict of doing this and conflict of other locations that we might have conflict later? Or have a conflict now with additional office space?
No, I don't know of any. I mean, most of, we don't have a lot of offices, I mentioned earlier, and oftentimes in the way you calculate parking, we base it on a small multi-tenant building, like a shopping center ratio of five per thousand. Cause most of the office buildings, unless it's the, you know, the park side drive offices over there, they're generally a relatively small footprint. It's going to be under 50,000 square feet. And that's normally the parking ratio for those be the five per thousand. So that should fit most of the other places that already have, you know, office zoning designation.
Okay. Don't want to open up Pandora's boxes, I'm always saying. Um, so mayor, any questions or comments?
Yeah. Um, I'll start off with, uh, the same thing I said in the staff developer, and, and that's reminding everyone that, uh, uh, we were very clear on the zoning restrictions concerning this piece of property, uh, prior to the, uh, current owner even purchasing it. Um, one of the main reasons it's zoned office is because it backs up to a residential area. Um, you know, it's, uh, uh, any others, I mean, would put quite a bit more traffic in there, and I think, uh, that's, that's a big concern. Uh, we, uh, we made a lot of different concessions on this piece of property with the owner. It was several issues, uh, that, that he asked for and, and, uh, uh, I mean, he's got the very best real estate broker in town, and that's Oliver Smith, and that's, uh, handling the property. And Oliver's fully capable of, uh, coming up with a, uh, office tenant, assuming it's price per square foots in line for the area. I see no reason to, uh, come in and, and, uh, to change the zoning on, uh, on this piece of property. Uh, it follows the land use and it should be like any other office area, uh, that's, as far as how we look at it. Now, with one other thing, um, I can see where we could add to the zoning, anything that's appointment only. And that would be something like a barber shop, a beauty shop, a nutritionist, chiropractor, uh, you know, a therapy, uh, location like Benchmark over next to Mellow Mushroom. Uh, this right here really does pare down the, uh, amount of parking that you have when it's an appointment only type of thing. So I could see adding that to the, uh, to the current zoning that we have now. That's all I have.
Mark, is the applicant is with us?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Just, just very briefly, um, again, my name's Matthew McClanahan. I, I work in Keith Alley's law office and, uh, we represent the, um, individual that owns this piece of property. It's Tennessee Elite Foundations LLC, uh, Dr. Barry there. And anyway, one again, thank Mark and thank, uh, everyone here on the call this evening for working with us at the staff development meeting at the end of March and, uh, glad to be able to pare down our request so that we can keep that with the overall mission of the town of Farragut. Basically, we just, we just seek to have a few additions that are natural extensions of what's currently already in place in addition to conforming with what the city of Knoxville is currently doing with, that Mark alluded to with the Recode Knoxville. Um, we're glad, we'll, we'll be glad to discuss, uh, any questions that anyone has. We had added the dry cleaning laundry mat drop off based upon some comments at the staff development meeting, but we're fine with, with removing that and, uh, replacing that potentially with a, with a banking option, uh, or some, you know, some kind of, uh, you know, equivalent office space there as well and helping to bring some clarity to the financial services versus, you know, exactly where, where do, where did, would a bank or some kind of lending institution fall, whether it be an office or a, a commercial use. So with that, I'll, I'll open up to any questions and I will be glad to respond to any concerns that you all might have.
Okay, so we'll start with Commissioner Meyer.
I do not have any questions.
Commissioner Russ?
Uh, no comments here, thank you.
Commissioner Green?
I have no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Kyle?
Where is the location of the property?
So it's the exact E nine one one address is, uh, it's off Kingston Pike. It's across from Ingalls, if you're familiar with, with that. The, there's a suite A and suite B. Uh, so the suite A is Knoxville Dental. This is suite B that, that my client is seeking to rent. Um, or, or does, does that, does that help you? I can pull up.
Yeah, I, I know what you're speaking about. Yes, thank you.
Okay, yes ma'am.
Commissioner Sinclair?
I have no questions.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Sorry, um, I'm kind of stuck on the, the bank thing, only because, um, most banks now have a drive-through and obviously that does, that can't even accommodate a drive-through. Um, and, um, I'm struggling with, uh, with a, a bank necess, I mean, financial advice or, or, um, advisors, that stuff makes sense to me, but a, an actual banking institution in office, um, I'm a little concerned about that. So, that's my only point.
I have no questions. Uh, well, the mayor, have any more questions or comments?
Well, the, uh, I agree with, uh, Vice Mayor Paul on the bank. Uh, they, they generate quite a bit of traffic and, uh, and they do need a drive-through and this is not really set up for it, not even close to being set up for it. Uh, same thing with a, um, a, a drop-off because for the, uh, dry cleaners, because they typically want to pull up front and park right in the, uh, handicap spot and get out and take stuff in or, or pick stuff up. The financial advisor part of it, uh, there again, that's typically an appointment, uh, type of thing. Even a law office, uh, would be a, a good fit, but, uh, you know, there, there's a lot of good fits that are already there that, uh, again, I, I, I really think Oliver Smith just needs to, uh, step up and, and help you guys out.
Well, uh, Oliver, Oliver does a good job for his client and, and Oliver's a, a great real estate agent. He, he is one person that we have consulted with, and you mentioned that, you know, Oliver's a, a great real estate agent, Knox Kipman. He is the one that has encouraged my client to seek this addition. Uh, again, you know, we're, we're just trying to minimize the intrusion, uh, to the town of Farragut, but at the same time maximize the services that are offered to the town. So, uh, the, these are things that, that can be a service to the people, that it can make it more convenient for the citizens of the town of Farragut. And, and again, low impact, uh, activities here, uh, to, to your point, Mr. Mayor, these are things that would definitely, um, be, you know, more by appointment. Obviously, we're fine with limiting the square footage to 1,500 square feet on, on the, uh, studios, on the art and fitness, uh, areas. And same thing with your, uh, uh, hair salon or barber shop. We can discuss, uh, limitation of the chairs, which would, you know, allay any kind of traffic concerns or volume concerns that might be there.
Mark, any, any other questions or comments by you?
Well, not really. I mean, I understand what, um, Vice Mayor Paul was talking about with the banks, but we've had discussions about banks in relation to commercial zoning, and that's where that really came from. Uh, but they, they would potentially have a drive-through, which would be, you know, that would be an issue potentially with the office. But, uh, I think whatever we would come up with needs to be something that we could evaluate and enforce too, uh, with some of these. It might be a little bit difficult to enforce uses that require an appointment. So we may want to look at, at some kind of physical limitation, uh, that is more, you know, measurable, I guess. But I think what the mayor was talking about is a good point. It, it, you know, a destination type, uh, use is more consistent with the office than, you know, just kind of a, um, you know, a drive-by, pull in and, you know, um, visit the, visit the entity that way. So, uh, that's more commercial in nature. So, uh, maybe we can look at the square footage or something and come up with some language that would address it from a physical aspect.
We'll move along to the next item and thank you for coming tonight.
Uh, question for the commissioners is, do you want the staff to put together an ordinance for y'all to look at and take action on next time or consider taking action on it? You think we have enough direction here, uh, with that?
Do you have enough direction?
Vice Mayor Paul here. Um, I think we also probably need to look at the definitions. I, I think it'd be good to just kind of look at that, that, um, if we need to add any more different definitions, do we need to clarify definitions? Um, I think that's got to be part of it. Adding to your, your to-do list, sorry.
Yeah, I think that's good. That's a more comprehensive look at it. Um, and, uh, so yeah, we can, well, we'll just, we'll look at it and see what we can identify. We may just have to present it again as a workshop next time, sounds like.
Mayor, did you have another comment?
Uh, no, my hand's not raised.
Okay. Then thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, thank you all very much. Have a good evening. Thank you, Mark. It's always good to work with you. We appreciate you.
We're moving along to item number eight. Discussion on the development of zoning pavilions, pavilions governing pain management clinics and methadone treatment and similar drug slash alcohol treatment clinics or facilities. Town of Farragut applicant.
Okay, this item came, came to the staff's attention in response to some community concerns, um, that were raised, um, to have us, you know, revisit our zoning provisions, um, specifically in relation to, um, pain management clinics, uh, drug treatment facilities. And particularly concerns about those type of uses in close, relatively close proximity to areas where there could be concentrations of children or young, young people. to areas where there could be concentrations of children or young, young people. So when we started looking through this, we found that, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot to this and actually pain management clinics and drug treatment clinics are really treated differently from the state regulation. The pain management clinics are regulated by the Department of Health and the drug treatment facilities are regulated by the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse and they have kind of their own regulations specific to those groups of uses. The town's current zoning ordinance, actually uses like that would fall under medical, dental and veterinary facilities. And we don't really have any specific additional uses that those, or conditions that those uses would have to satisfy and no use separation requirements. So what the staff did was we started looking at what some of the other communities maybe nearby or communities that are comparable to the town were doing in this regard. And so we looked at the city of Knoxville, Knox County, Franklin, Collierville, Alcoa. And what we found with those communities is obviously everybody does it a little bit different. Couple of the communities are pretty much like we are and they just treat it as a medical use and they don't have any additional requirements. But what we did find is that oftentimes where, where it is regulated, they do provide definitions to differentiate the two so that they can make land use and location distinctions as it might apply to those uses. And oftentimes, communities will include these in only a limited amount of zoning districts and maybe have them made it as a use on review to where you have to meet certain conditions in order for that use to be permitted in that particular zoning district. And a third thing, you know, that, that, that we kind of looked at are, you know, what are the potential legal ramifications with dealing with uses like this? You, you know, you want to make sure that you're not what we call zoning them completely out of your community. That would be kind of an exclusionary zoning concern. So when we pulled all that information together, we did have a workshop with the Board of Mayor and Alderman back on March 12th. We had this on the agenda last month for workshop discussion, but you know, obviously we had to pull some things off due to the desire to have a shorter meeting. But we did obtain some feedback from the Board of Mayor and Alderman. We presented them with some draft definitions. Those were in your all's packet for drug treatment facilities and clinics and for pain management clinics. And those definitions largely came from language in either the city of Knoxville or Knox County with some minor modifications. And then we also provided as part of that language for consideration, some minimum requirements that we might want to consider adding to our zoning ordinance as it relates to these uses in whatever zoning districts they may be permitted. So they would kind of be a use on review in that regard. And then there'd be these, this layer of, of conditions that that use would have to demonstrate compliance with in order for it to be approved. So one of the conditions was, you know, demonstrating that they have the appropriate licenses and certificate of need from the state. And again, this, these conditions came largely from Knox County. The second condition was just demonstrating they had written documentation that the Knox County Sheriff's Department has been notified of the facility, where it's at, its hours of operation, programs it has, treatment methods, staffing levels and their qualifications. The third thing was providing for use separation requirements. So what was in our draft requirements was that these uses, these two uses would have to be 1,000 feet from any public or private school, daycare facility, public library, community center, or public park as measured from property line to property line. And then the fourth condition would be that the, that the facility would have to either front or have direct access to an arterial street so that it's, they're not likely to be closer to a residential area. And then the parking space requirements of five per thousand so that it would have ample parking available. So some of the, we, we basically provided some maps that were shown at that workshop. First of them showed schools, parks and community center. And basically the, the orange line there is 500 feet from those properties that are identified as those three uses. The green area is 1,000 feet. So that's with those three uses you can see there. Then if we add daycares, schools, parks and daycares, then you can see where that, that green line falls. And then the third exhibit in the packet was just overlaying that same separation application to the zoning ordinance. And you can see that the pink areas are areas zone commercial. There are a number of pink areas and red areas up near the interstate with regional commercial that would be potentially available for those type uses based on strictly that use separation condition. So we wouldn't be, in my opinion at least, we wouldn't be zoning it out. There would be plenty of opportunity for that use to happen in the town provided it can meet the conditions. So I guess what the staff is looking for with regards to this item is just some direction from the commission as to, one, do you feel like we need to add some additional requirements to specifically address these type of uses and facilities? You know, are the definitions that we proposed in general on target? And then third, you know, are you comfortable with the minimum requirements that we're proposing as kind of conditions that may be reviewed in relation to these uses? And that would include that 1,000-foot separation from certain types of uses, particularly uses where you would have potentially a concentration of, of children. So with that, I'll be happy to try to answer questions y'all may have on this, but that's, that's what we're looking for.
Okay, I'll start with Commissioner Meyer. Any questions or comments?
Yes, well, my comments are, are this, is I, I do think this is warranted in our town. 20 years of commercial real estate, the, the worst tenant I've ever had was a pain management clinic that disguised itself as a walk-in clinic. And besides the fact that they paid their rent on time, it was a nightmare. They ran off every tenant around them. Two things that, that I see, and I'm completely for the proposal that we have that has a 1,000 feet of separation from schools, parks and daycares. Two things I also see, five parking spaces for 1,000 square feet is not enough. I can tell you that from experience, not enough parking requirements for them. And then the other thing I see is that wouldn't the Admiral David Farragut statue pocket park, wouldn't that also be a, shouldn't that be also on here? And it doesn't look like we designated it on here, but I'd like to see a 1,000-foot radius around that pocket park next to the town hall also covered. Did everybody get that? Hopefully I had my mic on.
Yes.
We got it.
Okay. So those were, those are the only two comments that I had is I'd like to see the pocket park next to the town hall included as, with the 1,000-foot buffer. And then maybe the parking requirements increased for a pain management clinic. And for the record, there is a difference between pain management and the, you know, recovery type operations. I've had recovery tenants, I've actually got two right now in the city of Knoxville. They're, they're fine tenants. There's a world of difference and we may not necessarily need to get into the details of why they're different, but they are different. And, and yeah, it is, it's a big distinction.
Okay, Commissioner Russ?
Uh, I, I don't have any further comment at this time. I would just like to review it again, maybe, if I may be in workshop or.
Commissioner Green?
Yeah, I didn't have any comments until Noah mentioned that this, his client ran off all the neighboring clients. What, what was that all about?
Mostly it had to do with people camping out in the parking lot, waiting for their turn to go into the doctor's office to get their prescriptions. And so when they would camp out in the parking lot, they would go knock on the neighbors' doors asking to use the restrooms. They would go in and trash the restrooms. You know, and they would, they would throw all their, everything from, you know, their, their fast food bags to their dirty diapers into the parking lot. It's a real sad thing, the addiction of, of these, you know, these narcotics, but it, that was the issue is it ran off all the, it literally, it was, it, I, it was, I was a mass exodus of tenants and I had tenants threatening to sue if I didn't let them out of their lease. And so even, so I, for a brief period of time, I, I kind of ended up selling my soul for this one tenant, which I thought was a walk-in clinic. And by the way, this may be an exception rather than the rule, that my tenant is the, is the, the, this drug kingpin that most of you have been reading about in the newspaper the last couple of years that, that, that had this, you know, where they were ran apparently by the mafia out of Florida and so forth. But anyway, the stuff that was on the news a couple of years ago, that actually was, was, heaven forbid, that was actually my tenant in the city of Knoxville. But that was, that caused me just an absolute disaster. And fortunately, the only time I was able to get them out is when the FBI came and kicked them out.
Okay, now hearing that, I go back to Mark. Do we have wording in the proposed ordinance, I guess you're gonna create, that precludes what Noah's talking about?
Well, I think some of that could be a law enforcement issue, really.
Well, and it is, the problem is when the staff gets an application for a new activity of occupancy for a space, you don't really know, this particular tenant, when, when they came to us, they had a, a representative in a three-piece suit that was very polished and said, we are a walk-in clinic. You can come in and get your allergy shots, you can come in and get your flu shot. And they were not a walk-in clinic and we didn't know it until all of a sudden I started having tenants calling me and telling me that they're having to lock their doors because of all these people trying to get into their space to, for whatever reason. And then all of a sudden we, when I went and, you know, parked in the parking lot, then I knew when there was about 50 cars without estate tags for about a 1,500 square foot office spot, I knew that I had a problem. And so that's the problem that I think generally speaking, the, the staff and us in real estate are going to continue to have is that you just don't really know that they're a pain management clinic because they don't advertise themselves. I mean, my, the, my tenant was called Urgent Care of Knoxville. And so, you know, they didn't, they didn't look like a pain manic clinic, a pain management clinic until, until about a, a week into it, then I realized what a disaster. And it took me a couple of years of battling and finally the FBI or TBI to get them out of there. But anyway, so I think that's the challenge.
The state has cracked down on this and really regulated it more in the last couple of years. So I'm not entirely sure that they could, they could exist under current state law. They would crack down on it harder. So that, that is something to be aware of.
Well, they, they do, we do have one in Farragut. I'm not going to pick on names. They're not a tenant of mine. They're, they're actually reasonably close to the town hall, but there is one and it, they have, you know, from all outward appearances, they're a regular doctor's office, but you know, you ask some of the neighbors next to them and you realize that there's something more going on than just being a regular doctor's office.
I have to agree with that, what Commissioner Meyer's talking about because I have complaints by their neighbors that, that, that are looking to move out of Farragut because of that particular location. And he just described exactly what goes on there where, where you've got not necessarily out-of-state tags or, although I have seen some Kentucky tags there, but they are tags from other counties that are sitting there and they launder around and, and smoke and, and leave their trash and, and then want to go into the restroom and, and at the locations that are beside this particular one that Chairman Meyer's, or, excuse me, Commissioner Meyer's talking about. I have numerous complaints from, from that particular tenants that were, that they're, they're looking to move. So I think it's really something we need to think about.
But here's my question to you, are they even registered as a pain management clinic?
Well.
And if they aren't, how do we, how do, how, we're not going to be able to control it with this ordinance.
Good question.
Yeah, anybody that's already in business, they're going to be grandfathered in, you know, unless the TBI or some law enforcement comes in and realizes and figures out that they're doing something wrong. And they may not be doing anything wrong, it's just that their client base is, is not typical. I, I, I'm, I'm trying to be as politically correct as possible. And so what happens is the, it, it's not the tenant themselves that causes a problem. They're not making noise and they're not, the tenant's not throwing trash out. It's the tenant's customers, the pain management clinic's customers that are creating the problems. And they created the problems for me and they're, I think Ron and I are thinking of the same location and they're creating the problems for those neighbors as well.
John, does that answer your question?
Well, it's not really a question. It's a concern that as we craft this ordinance, we need to try to figure out a way to preclude what I'm talking about. And I don't know what options are available because I'm just not well enough informed on the, on the state laws and on the restrictions. But that is something that we have to keep in mind to try to preclude that. Essentially, that's what we're trying to do in the first place, but it sounds like it's not as easy as it seems.
True, true. Commissioner Kyle, you having questions or comments?
Well, I think we certainly are borrowing here on these being legal questions, actually enforcement based on the laws and regulations for these type of facilities. And if in fact, as some of the other commissioners have stated, that enforcement has improved in the last few years, then something should be able to be done, I would think, if the appropriate authorities were consulting about that one tenant that we're talking about. But I'm like Mr. Green, I, I'm concerned about what can be done to prevent a tenant from getting in there that actually is pretending to, to be something that they aren't. And I think that's, it sounds like that's the issue in general. I also liked what Noah said about the, around the town hall there. I would like to see the whole town center excluded if possible because I think the parking area there would be just fodder for the people, for those clients of the tenants to congregate if it were too close to the town hall. I don't know if that's possible or not, but I'd like you, the staff to look into that. That's all.
That all was Anne? Commissioner?
That's all.
Commissioner Sinclair?
I echo all their comments. I think there are a lot of good comments there. One question I have is like on, on the minimum requirement of ease. They're talking about that, Noah brought up the five spaces for 1,000 square feet. What size, is there a size limit we can put on the, the, this clinic? Are we thinking more than 1,500 or 2,000 square feet?
Yeah, you could do that. You could put a size limitation on it.
I think we ought to restrict it to some kind of, more like a, you know, a single doctor's office or something, do something to where it's not, it can't be, somebody can't get creative and do something larger. something larger. Like taking over, you know, a commercial space that's pre-existing that's large.
Now, keep in mind that the, the disaster that I had, they were only about 1,500 square feet. And when I say 50 cars, I'm not making that up because they will have, I don't know, 10 or 15 people in the waiting room, 10 or 15 people shoved in little exam rooms, and another 20 or 30 people sitting in the parking lot, waiting for their turn to go in.
That's, I've heard, I've heard that at other places, that people stack up out in the, in the parking lot. So you've got the issue, not just the building, but the parking lot as well.
Like us Mayor Paulson said, I mean, the state has cracked down a lot in the last couple of years. I know Senator Briggs in particular has dealt a lot with this. And in fact, he worked with Knox County on a lot of their language, I believe. So, you know, the state is more involved than, in these uses than they used to be. And frankly, from a town's perspective, you know, we're, we're kind of like Noah, a lot of times we, somebody may present themselves as something that it end up being something very different. And that's really almost impossible to control. It really ultimately comes down to maybe getting the state involved now that there's more teeth in the state law as it relates to these kind of uses and/or the Sheriff's Department. I mean, because a lot of it becomes an enforcement, enforcement issue. A lot of these uses, most of these uses probably are very legitimate and people don't even know they're in there. But then you have these, the ones like Noah had, that, you know, is completely out of control. It's, it's hard to, it's going to be, it'd be really hard to, you know, identify that on the front end. And it would be a challenge. But I mean, we can add some physical parameters to, you know, to tighten that up, you know, you got the, this use separation thing that we're proposing and maybe even limiting the square footage. But again, like Noah mentioned, you know, you can have a thousand square foot facility that has a lot of problems. So I think that's going to be kind of the challenge that, that we might face.
I think it was quite a few years ago, there was a, a place in town that they were able to shut the business down because of the occupancy. It was over, the occupancy of the building was over the limits. And so they were able to shut it down from that aspect where the police had been trying for quite some time. And finally, they got them from codes violations. So, you know, we need numbers.
I think we need to have a size limit. I know there's, you know, you're not going to solve the problem with the parking lot, no matter, like you say, with any size. But if you have a larger parking lot, there's more spaces for people to congregate too. So I think we need to limit the size of the facility. Because that also could help shelter where it actually could even go.
Do we have an option? That's a good point that Rita made. Do we have an option on the occupancy limits?
I don't know really enough about that to give you a good answer. I'd have to check on that. And that may be something that is addressed in state law. I don't know enough about it. You know, it's again, something we'd have to look into.
I, I do think there is some benefit to try to mirror Knox County's ordinance as much as possible. I think if for some reason we ever did get taken to court on this thing, I think it's going to be easier to defend if we're consistent with some, some neighboring municipalities. That's kind of one takeaway. And the other takeaway is, again, let's figure out a way to designate the Admiral Farragut Statue Park as a park. If that needs to go through the Board of Mayor and Alderman, maybe that could be put on their agenda. And that way, that also can pick up that 1,000-foot radius, which, which would cover a lot of the Ford property and cover a lot of our MUTC area.
This is John Green. I have one more comment. Would it be possible for us to, to create a zone for these? And pick the places we want them, or we would allow them, and then make those a zone, whatever we come up with?
I haven't been able to comment yet. I have some, some suggestions that came from Alderman Meyer. He suggested that we just limit it to regional, commercial, commercial plus the 1,000-foot barrier. Then it, then it keeps it up along in the Turkey Creek in that area and removes it from the rest of the town. I will add this as well. We have, what kind of spurred this conversation was the, it's a drug treatment clinic, but it's, it's, all it is is counseling and it's over there close to where the, in that, in the medical area, right there by the intermediate middle and high school in the town, I forget what you call that.
West End?
Yes, West End. So anyway, and there is no, there's no prescription writing. It is, it's purely counseling of individuals that are in recovery and it's group counseling. So I, I assume we would like to include that in our definitions. But so far, that's not included in these definitions, or it's not very clear. I mean, it says drug treatment clinic, but it, it indicates a, well, it does say and/or the issuing of a prescription, counseling of patients and/or the issuing of a prescription. So I guess that includes these, these, these counseling clinics as well.
This is Commissioner Myers. Personally, I'd like to differentiate between the two. I, there is a distinct difference between the counseling and the, the folks that are trying to improve their lives and in recovery versus the addicts that go to the pain management clinics. And again, there are not all pain management clinics cater to addicts. There are very legitimate pain management clinics out there, I'm sure. But again, I, I do think at this juncture, we need to differentiate ourselves, differentiate the, we're throwing it all in the same pot and they're just not the same.
Well, and you, but if you talk to some parents that are over there, they're, they're, to them, it's a distinction without a difference. You still have people that are, even if they are, they're still possibly on drugs or possibly could be getting re-addicted. And, you know, they didn't, they just felt like that. They were very uncomfortable with the whole thought of it being so close to the schools.
I like Louise, I think she gave credit to, to Scott Meyer. I mean, I kind of like his idea of, let's just put it regional commercial and put the 1,000-foot buffers on there and be done with it.
I'm, I was fine with that, too.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah.
Good idea.
This is Mayor.
About to call on you, Mayor.
Okay. I think we, if we do like what Noah said and, and stay with, pretty close to what Knox County does, I think we're going to be safe because understand that it's going to be, they're going to be partially the ones that have to police this in, in just about every instance. So I think we should probably look at that. The, what Alderman Meyer has, has brought up is, is excellent. This is, this is probably the best way to do it. We've got a couple, and again, when you look at, if we somehow or another have it to where there's no dispensing period, I think that would be good wording because that right there is where you get into trouble. The, the prescription part of it's bad enough. And that's what Noah was talking about. And we have one in town that, that has that issue. But we've also got two others that are not an issue. So, but they are more of the counseling type as opposed to, to the prescription writers. Also, and I'll step down and, and I'd like to hear from our representative on this matter.
Um, so I definitely like, I don't like the idea of them and just being in the town of Farragut at all. But obviously, we can't really stop it necessarily, obviously. But I'm like, not very familiar with zoning. Every time we talk about it, it kind of confuses me. So I don't know how that would work.
Well, Melanie, let me tell you, when you look at this, what's on the screen right there, you see the really dark pink right by the highway?
Yeah.
That's regional commercial. That's the only place in the entire town of Farragut where we have what's called regional commercial. So the proposal by Alderman Meyer in a previous meeting was to restrict it to just that dark pink area minus the, a distance requirement from schools. And of course, the school north of the highway is Knoxville Christian. And then the school south of the highway is Farragut Primary. So it would, yeah, there you go. So it would restrict it to the dark, that dark pink area, but just in those, beyond where the, the school zones are. So that's what that is. That was that, what the suggestion was.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think that's definitely, probably makes the most sense because even like, having it anywhere over like, just near the schools at all, like even if with a 1,000-foot radius, I don't, that just still makes me uncomfortable.
And I appreciate what Melanie is putting in, putting in, that's the issue and the parents are as, as uncomfortable. Mayor Williams, the one concern we have about, I think was addressed in our earlier meeting with staying as close to Knox County's ordinances. Knox County restricts it considerably from residential areas. But Knox County is so large that they, they're not restricting, they're not excluding it from happening. If we did a distance based on residential areas, we'd essentially exclude them from town. So that was the struggle with trying to align with Knox County's law. Although I like the idea of lining with it and then just seeing where that lands us.
If I may provide additional context, this is Trevor Hobbs. I worked with the Park and Bart Hose on kind of putting these, you know, initial thoughts down on paper. Just so you're aware, when you look at Knox County's regulations, they do have a separate section for pain management clinics and a separate section for drug treatment facilities. But when you look then at the actual minimum requirements for both, they're essentially the same. There's a, there's a ton of overlap with just a few minor differences or just apply to rehabilitation facilities. So we merged them in that sense to provide one single set of requirements because again, Knox County was essentially two identical lists. So just to give you some context, that's how we came up with that, those minimum requirements. Even though they are distinct separate uses, Knox County's minimum requirements are essentially the same compared.
One thing that concerns me is we've got three. Now we're going to have a fourth one. Are, are we an easy target for them to locate here? And that's, that's the big thing that I see. I mean, we're, we're 16 square miles. Why are we all of a sudden got, you know, we've got, we had one and we got two, then three, and now we've got a fourth one. Unless we make this pretty clear, I mean, this, this may be a Mecca of where they want to go to because we're, we're kind of lax.
I can see that too, Mayor. I don't want us to be too easy of a target for a location. And of course, my, Mark, you'll run all of this by Tom Hale as far as the legal aspects.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we'll definitely get, get his thoughts on it. But I guess what I'm hearing from you all is that we should pursue it. We probably ought to restrict, restrict these things to the C2 zoning district and keep the, keep the other minimum requirements, more or less. And, yeah, I don't know whether you want us to deal with the, the phrase dispensing of and the definitions for each of these. We can, we can take a look at that. I think, again, like I said, those definitions largely came from either the city of Knoxville or Knox County.
Yeah, we might ask Tom Hale about that as well.
Yeah, okay.
And I can, I can foresee some of these neighborhoods that are backing up to this regional commercial district are not going to be happy.
Well, if you look at it, it's, it's, it's pretty isolated.
I think it's our best alternative.
Yeah. I mean, it's, Sweetbrier doesn't back up to it. They have, they would, that's not, that's not regional commercial behind that. It's commercial and while there is, regional commercial looks like it's right there on the corner there, but it really does limit a lot of it.
Well, have we given you enough help here, Mark?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions or comments there for Mark before we move on?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Myers. I, again, I do want to stress, I, I truly think there's a distinction between a pain management clinic, a methadone clinic, and counseling. And I just want to make sure we don't accidentally throw all counseling, again, big difference between it's a, a facility for rehab that dispenses methadone and a facility that, that does counseling. And I, I just, I hate to throw them all in the same, same pot. I, and I, somebody had mentioned, you know, some issue over on West End. I, I'm not familiar with that. So I don't really know what they do or if there's been complaints about it, or they're just, you know, not in my backyard people that just don't like the idea of it being close to a school. But I, I do think there is a time and a place for facilities that, for counseling. I think it's very appropriate. And, and I've not had, I, I've got two counseling tenants now, not in the town of Farragut, and they're good tenants. I don't have problems out of the tenants or their, their, their clients.
And I had phone calls from numerous residents, both for and against. The, the against was, of course, what Louise was talking about, the fear factor of them. And I think that's more dispensing and maybe even prescriptioning if they, if they're laundering. But the ones that were, that were for were mostly veterans that had a real pain management they needed to live and that they felt, and, and not what, some of them were just older people, like myself, but that, for whatever reason, they, you know, they had back problems, whatever, whatever it was that they had pain management. So I had, I had calls from those folks as well. So, and it was about equal as far as the for and against.
When, when we're talking counseling, do you want to be careful that we don't open ourselves up to residential facilities?
No, I, I'm not advocating overnight or residential facilities whatsoever. I'm talking about, you know, strictly where you go in with an appointment and either you do individual counseling or maybe sometimes group counseling. I, again, those, those are folks I've never had. I've got one tenant now that I've had for 15, 16, oh, going on 16 years, the same tenant in a pretty good size, about, in about 6,000 square feet. And they are a great tenant. They're clean and their patients are, are, you know, these are folks that, that either have, you know, typical alcohol or drug counseling. And so these are people that are fairly, fairly far along in their, you know, their recovery in their lives. I mean, they're, they're, this is not methadone. There's a difference. They don't dispense any kind of substitute narcotics to try to wean you off. So, anyway.
Okay, I just don't open ourselves up to residential facilities. That's not our intent.
No, it's not. It's definitely not my intent to do any kind of residential or overnight facilities. So somebody was going to ask me a question, I think.
Yeah, Noah, considerations relative to individual counseling versus group therapy?
No, the, I, I've got. No. The, I, I've got two that I think do both. You know, depending on your insurance and, and your, your wherewithal, your financial wherewithal, the group counseling, I think, is cheaper. And so, you know, there's some comedy to scale there. And then, you know, if you've got insurance that'll pay for it, or if you've got, you know, more money, then, then, you know, you can do, you know, one-on-one counseling, you know, no different than going and seeing a therapist or a social worker to, you know, talk about issues.
Any more questions?
Well, we'll try to see if we can look at that, those distinctions that Noah's talking about. Maybe clearly the pain management clinic would be more of a regional commercial, and we may need to look at the counseling and the drug treatment clinic and see if we have a little, little different approach with that.
Well, I definitely think when you're talking about the dispensing of methadone, Suboxone, or similar medications in the treatment, maybe detoxification, I mean, I think that, those do give me some concerns. And I, I don't have any problem putting that in there with the pain management clinics.
Okay. Kind of like the way we described it then. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, we'll move on to item number nine, approval of utilities.
Uh, we don't have any.
Okay. Item number 10, citizens' forum.
We did not have any that were submitted for.
No, that means your question's submitted.
No.
Okay, in that case, the April 16, 2020 meeting is over. It's been a historic occasion here.